Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 22nd, 2019 meeting of the DeKalb City Council. Prior to our roll call this evening, I would remind anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the council under either public participation or at the place on the agenda where the item to which you'd like to speak is on, I'd like you to give our city clerk, Lynn Fazekas, the speaker request form, which is in the back, and we will get you on at the present time. Just a reminder, for those who may want to speak to any item on the agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, we would ask you to consider public participation, Item D, on the agenda. This will allow you to, if the spirit moves you, to come, make a comment, and then not necessarily stick around for the entirety of the meeting. If by chance you'd like to speak to an item on the agenda, we would ask then that you indicate as such on the speaker request form, and we'll get you on at the appropriate time. With that, I'd like to ask our city clerk, Lynn Fazekas, to call the roll, please.
Jacobson.
Here.
Finukin.
Here.
Stupija.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
We have a number of presentations tonight. As a matter of fact, we have ten presentations, the most that I recall, since I've been mayor two years ago. So I would suspect that we're going to have a little bit more information up front from our regular agenda items, but that's good. That means that we have a lot happening here in the city of DeKalb. For those of you who have picked up an agenda, you'll see under Presentation Number Two, we're going to recognize a number of DeKalb, city of DeKalb interns. We've been fortunate in that we've had two interns who have spent considerable time with the city of DeKalb, and their background is such that we felt so good about them that we hired them in full-time positions for the city of DeKalb. This is not new necessarily. We've had that happen in the city of DeKalb prior. One of those folks who we have hired full-time, he's now a management analyst. He spent the last couple of years with us in the city manager's office. I'd like to ask Jason Blumenthal to please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Jason?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Jason. Now we are to the Item C, Approval of Tonight's Agenda. Unless there are any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda, I see nobody trying to get my attention. I would ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Finukin. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Finukin.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Motion passes. The agenda is approved as presented. We now go into public participation. City Clerk Fazekas, has anybody indicated that they'd like to speak to, on this part of the agenda? Again, anyone who would like to speak to any item not on the agenda, or any item on the agenda, they're more than welcome to do that. I see we have one.
Couple of these, I'm not sure if they're public participation.
Okay, we'll ask them what they want to do. Thank you. Okay, Mark Charvat, Item D, Public Participation. Mark?
Good evening, council. Want to wish a fond farewell to our members who are going to be leaving us after this meeting. Appreciate your service, so thank you so much. I want to comment on a couple of things. I brought this to the attention of our fire chief, and I emailed a number of our aldermen in reference to burning. A couple Mondays ago, actually during the last council meeting, the whole south end of town was filled with smoke. And apparently, from what I found out, it was burning that took place just over the border of the city of DeKalb, along South First Street and Elva, which is the county's jurisdiction. And in conversation with the county, I'm not getting much response, apparently, they do not have a burning ordinance. The smoke was all blowing northward, so the southern end of town was immersed in awful smoke. I mean, I saw the fire department trucks roaming around trying to figure out where the smoke is at. So apparently, the county does not have discussions with the city of DeKalb when there is a fire. This was an intended fire, by the way, this was a controlled burn, I might add. But apparently, there needs to be some sort of communication between the county and the city and the township when they're doing these controlled burns, perhaps to encourage those who are doing these controlled burns to, when they're burning, make sure the wind is blowing in the other direction, so you're not affecting a large population. I also want to comment on water billing. I sent most of you an email in reference to this. We are now doing water billing on a two-month basis, apparently, and we used to do it on a three-month basis. So recently, we initiated a charge, the city of DeKalb, in reference to if you pay with a credit card, or if you pay with a debit card, of a fee. Now, a lot of people have been complaining about the fee. I can understand the fee on the credit card. The debit card fee really doesn't make any sense, because debit cards shouldn't cost anything. But nevertheless, if you decide to pay, you have to make a trip either to the city, or drop it in the drop box, or wait in line to pay it at the front desk. I would really like to see the city perhaps go back to the three-month billing, as opposed to the two-month billing. I know the intended purpose was to make citizens feel like their bills are less, because you're being billed six times a year, as opposed to four times a year. To be honest, I'd rather have it every six months, because it's one less check you have to write. I realize that may be cost prohibitive for some, but I would really like to consider going back to the three-month billing period. So, those are my comments, and again, best of luck to our council members who are departing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Michael Fitzgerald.
How are you doing? I just want to talk about the parking stalls that are only in front of my house and my neighbors' houses. I'd like them removed. Because the neighbors that are a block away from me, where I park my camper, complain constantly about my camper parking in front of their house, whereas, if I could park it in front of my house, I would, but I can't, because you guys keep finding me 75 bucks a shot every time I do. So I'd just like those parking stalls removed. Thank you.
Nicholas Cronauer. Nick, do you want to wait until the item is on the agenda, or would you like to speak now? Nick Cronauer.
Good morning, or afternoon, evening, council. As you know, I realize the vote for the Fisk project is, as I believe was, the term is dead in the water. I understand that, I get that. I'm just here, out of respect to the council, I appreciate everything you've done the past two years, been working on this. I appreciate the city staff for everything they've done to help us move this project along until we hit a roadblock. With that said, I do think you're making a big mistake. The full truth has not been disclosed to you. There is a conflict of interest in the background that I don't think anyone's been made aware of. But with that said, I don't want you to regret this mistake later on down the road when the truth comes out. So, again, thank you. Dean, best of luck to you in your new career. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Okay, I don't believe that I have any other speaker request forms of anybody who would like to speak to an item not on the agenda. Mark Charvat's going to speak on an item that is on the agenda. Again, if you would like to speak sometime during the meeting, make sure you get your speaker request form up to Lynn Fazekas. Now to Presentations. Presentation Number One is recognition of outgoing council members, to which Mr. Charvat alluded. What I'd like to do is to take some editorial license and reverse the order on which you see them printed. I'd like to speak first to the farewell of Joyce Stupija, then Kate Noriko, and then David Jacobson. At the conclusion of my comments on Joyce Stupija, she has declined to make any comments at this time. However, Kate Noriko and Dave Jacobson have indicated they would like to make a remark after my remarks. So if the alderman would kindly give me just a couple of minutes to make a few comments on them. After Third Ward Alderman Mike Markort's resignation in early December of last year, I had the responsibility to find someone who would be with us for only a few months. We could not have done better than Joyce Stupija, whose experience as village president in Villa Park, bolstered by her service on our police pension board, put her in an excellent position to join our council. She has been quite active in her ward, and in interfacing with other aldermen. We're fortunate that she would like to be reappointed to the pension board, and I'd expect that to be on the agenda, following her official terms, and next month. Joyce, I understand you are going to refrain from any comments now. I would like to ask our city manager, Bill Nicholas, now to make a special presentation to Joyce.
Can't do it without your help, Mayor.
Okay, you want me out there?
Yes.
Sure.
Joyce? I think, out in front. No, I don't have to go. Joyce says she's not coming, Jerry.
Joyce is going to stay up here, so.
Mayor?
Sure.
In honor of your service, Joyce, we have, yeah, how do you do this? We have a plaque for you, which says, "The city of DeKalb extends its sincere appreciation to Joyce Stupija for her dedication and service to the citizens of DeKalb, Alderman Ward Three, 2019."
Joyce?
There's a whole one for applause.
Thank you.
As is our custom, you're only allowed to put this in your driveway, you can't put this in your driveway. But, symbolically, we have Creative Stupija Street in honor of your service. Thank you so much.
Put it in the grass. Kate Noriko seemingly always has something to say, an opinion on most matters that have come before this city council. And for that, Kate, I say thank you. Your thoughtfulness, your passion for doing the right thing, and the stark realization that your vote may often fly in the face of others on this daze, is very much appreciated. The Fifth Ward is one with a diverse population, and that diversity has meant differing opinions, many differing with your view. What an experience. My hope is that the slings and arrows that have often been targeted at you during the past four years will only serve to solidify your realization that being a public official is not always a bed of roses. But hang in there, Kate, because now it's time that hopefully you can smell a few of those roses. Please help me welcome Kate Noriko, and say farewell to her tonight. Now, as I said, Kate always has something to say, so I'm going to turn the microphone over to her for a few brief comments.
And they will be brief. This message is a thank you. First, to my family, my husband, John, my daughter, Jennifer, my son-in-law, Chris, my special grandson, Aiden, my son, John, and his girlfriend, Lexi. You have supported and encouraged me throughout this aldermanic journey. To my fellow council members and the mayor, even when we disagreed, and sometimes strongly, I always knew that you were hardworking and dedicated. To the city administration and staff, you patiently answered my questions, graciously helped me, and allowed me to participate in your training, police and fire. You work in difficult conditions, often without acknowledgement, and are the glue that keep the city running. To the citizens who demonstrated your interest in the city by attending meetings, sending emails, and calling me. Overall, serving as Alderman Ward Five for DeKalb has been a positive experience, one which has enriched me and absolutely changed me. My hope going forward is that all of you work together respectfully and creatively to move the city. I wish you well. As my Polish ancestors would say, "Jankujya." Thank you.
Would you like to come down? The city of DeKalb extends its sincere appreciation to Kate Noriko for her dedication and service to the citizens of DeKalb, Alderman Ward Five, May 11, 2015 to May 13, 2019. Kate, congratulations. Thank you.
Kate worked a little longer, so she gets a Boulevard. Congratulations.
Well, I'm actually going to put it on my screen port. So, you know, if anybody can find my screen port, you're welcome. No, you're welcome to stop by for a drink.
Kate, here. If Joyce gets a street and Kate gets a Boulevard, I wonder what we have for this next.
He gets the expressway.
I've called him difficult, often obnoxious, sometimes just too damn smart for this small-town mayor to understand. But I've gotten to respect Dave Jacobson, and more we've worked together, the more we've argued, and the more both of us realized, I believe, that we both had what was best for the citizens of DeKalb in mind. Eight years is a long time to serve as First Ward Alderman, especially given the change that we've experienced in this city. Dave has served that area well, most notably and most recently as the liaison for this council to the very important Antiglidd North Revitalization Project. Believe me, Alderman Jacobson has been a historical compass to many of his councilmen. His knowledge of what this city has gone through over the past eight years was key in securing several intergovernmental agreements that we've been able to accomplish. Without your persistence, Dave, and your knowledge of how municipal government works, that process would have taken considerably longer. So, Dave, good luck. Thank you. Stay as sweet as you are. The city of DeKalb is indeed richer because of David Jacobson and his dedicated service. Wouldn't you agree?
Sure. Can we let me talk for a second? Oh, yes, absolutely. I'm sorry. This guy would like to have a few words to say, so go ahead. I'm sorry.
We tried to stop him.
Tried. Wouldn't be the first mayor.
David?
I'm going to take a quick page from our police chief and make a statement. It's probably not quite so brief as my counterpart, Kate. I've been to several meetings that have lasted 11, 12, 1 o'clock in the morning, so on my last meeting, I take a moment to thank quite a few that have helped me to keep my sanity sitting up in the seat. On my way in this, after this evening, I remarked to Alderman Verbic, "Where did the last eight years go?" I remember coming in, being the young gun with a full head of steam. Now, as I leave eight years later, I'm still the young gun. I still have a full head of steam. It's certainly been a ride for me. Every semester, I get up and speak in front of my undergraduate fraternity recruits and explain to them an important bit of information I've learned in my life. In any relationship that matters in life, you can only expect to take from it an equal measure to which you put in. I've spent the last eight years here trying to live up to that credo. While oftentimes, it may have been a bit contentious, I've put my heart and my mind toward living up to the trust the voters of the First Ward and the city of DeKalb vested in me. Throughout my eight years, I've been blessed to meet several lifelong friends, oftentimes where I least expected it. I met the love of my life and her children in this building, which happened to be here to support me tonight. I can truthfully say that this has been one of the most challenging engagements that I have ever had the opportunity to participate in in my life, and I'm happy to say that throughout the sacrifices, I've been given the opportunity to put in everything I could, bring to the table, and come out eight years later, a better person for my experiences here. We fought through many challenges here as a city. Much of my time here was during contentious times, high newsworthy times, very interesting times to be an elected official. But now with our new staff and a new council, again with that full head of steam, we are in a point where we are ready and able to be successful if we break out of our mold and do things differently. While I have regularly been known to be a glass-half-empty kind of guy, tonight, I will do my best to try to stay positive. While some complain about DeKalb's challenges, I will remind our newly-elected's that those same challenges can be opportunities as well. I wish each of you the best of luck, and genuinely hope that now that much of the strife has passed us, you will have the opportunity during your tenures to enjoy the fruits and see the benefits of the years of difficult choices this council has had to make. The advice that I'd like to leave you with is simple: Do your homework. Get out and talk to people, especially those outside your comfort level. Go to them, don't expect them to come to you. Don't allow politics, echo chambers, or preconceived notions to guide you. Staff is a tremendous resource, but only one of many in this community. Engage in difficult discussions and reach out to others. Be truthful, honest, transparent, and forthright. Stand by your convictions, but be open to new perspectives, and don't be afraid to get a little bit loud once in a while. Never forget that you are here because your residents trusted you to be their eyes and ears. Honor and respect that trust, and do everything in your power to, as Gene reminds us, and reminds us again, and then, in case we forgot, reminds us again, to leave the city in a better place than you found it. Thank you.
I think Kate Noriko read this, because it sounds remarkably similar to hers. "The city of DeKalb extends its sincere appreciation to David Jacobson for his dedication and service to the citizens of DeKalb, Alderman Ward One, May Two, 2011 to May Third, 13, 2019." Dave, congratulations, and thank you very much.
I full of the progression we've set up here tonight. I have a caveat. We did think about that, but I thought it would be much more fitting, based on what the mayor said and what you said, to talk about the Jacobson way. So, this is as close as we could come, Jacobson way.
Once again, congratulations and thank you to Joyce Stupija, Kate Noriko, and David Jacobson. Okay, we're all the way now to Number Two, under Presentations, and I'm going to ask Assistant City Manager Ray Munch to make a few comments, and then present a few certificates. Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe a few of our interns are here with us tonight, if you want to come up and join me by the podium. The city is extremely fortunate to have many interns who help us on a daily basis, both from Northern Illinois University and Kishawaki Community College. Interns are, you provide a lot of advantages to the city in that they supplement our regular workforce and help get the day-to-day done. But the reality is, is, you know, they also help us by bringing new ideas and fresh perspectives to the city, and that's important. Some of our interns are here for a longer tenure, such as Jason and Walker, who are through our graduate-level MPA program. They do two years with the city typically. Some interns are only here for a semester, but no matter their tenure, they always provide some important contributions to the city. So with that said, we have a certificate for all of our interns, so those of you that are in attendance at least. Jason Blumenthal, in the city manager's office, and Jason is no longer an intern, he's now a management analyst. Rachel Sanchez is our human resources intern from NIU. Walker Steinkie is one of our MPA interns from NIU. And I'm told Walker just passed his capstone project, so he'll be graduating May 10. Congratulations.
Great.
And Yadira Verastucci, she is our airport intern from NIU. So thank you to all of you.
Can't say enough about your service, dedication to the city of DeKalb during either your short tenure, or in some cases, your longer tenure with us. And we'll make sure that the certificates are given to those others who weren't able to be with us tonight. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to have Robert Putz come up. Bob, if you'd come up, I would like to let folks know that we're going to recognize the Consumer Advocacy Council of the DeKalb County upon their 20th anniversary. The city of DeKalb City Council and its staff extend sincere thanks and appreciation in recognition of 20 years of service to DeKalb and the surrounding DeKalb community. As is the case with Bob, we have a number of presentations tonight. Anyone who is going to get a certificate is more than welcome to make a few brief comments. I've asked Bob to make a few comments about consumer advocacy, and whatever else he'd like to do. Robert?
Good evening. Like you said, my name is Robert Putz, and I am the founder of the Consumer Advocacy Council of DeKalb County, which is an essential resource for the mental health community of DeKalb County, Illinois. We've been a 501(c)(3) since April 30th of 99. We provide monetary and education services to consumers, and those are persons with mental health issues in DeKalb County, Illinois. We have the full support of Fish Health System now, which is part of Northwestern Medicine. My office is at 631 South First Street in DeKalb, otherwise known as Community Support Program, or Ben Gordon Center. All members are consumers and volunteers. All grants for consumer expenses do not have to be paid back. So far, the CUCDC has helped 442 consumers for a total of over $340,000. So far, the CUCDC has helped 442 consumers for a total of over $340,000. To apply, they should have a caseworker with a community support program, Association for Individual Development, see a psychiatrist, live in DeKalb County, Illinois, and be in need financially. There's two examples that really take me back. We're consumer number 157. She worked for a major department store for 10 years and hurt her shoulder during work and three days later was fired. She has been seen a psychiatrist since the age of nine. She has received funds for food, phone, apartment security deposit, and personal expenses. Then there was consumer number 235. A single mom with a 10-day-old baby is facing eviction. Funds for rent, ComEd, and NICOR. I am nationally recognized by the National Council for Behavioral Health. This is a magazine that President John F. Kennedy started in 1963. My story is on page 15. So please sponsor us. May 2, the givedekalbcounty.org. Go to, click search, print, Consumer Advocacy Council of DeKalb County, click donate, and you can pay online at this time, or else you can pay by check or cash at the DeKalb County Community Foundation, 475 DeKalb Avenue, Sycamore, Illinois.
Bob, if you'd come up, I have a certificate of appreciation for you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We are next going to recognize Michael Kirk. Michael, if you'd come up to the podium. We're going to recognize and give Michael a certificate for his Trees of DeKalb organization. It has a tireless effort and dedication to the presentation in just a few days of DeKalb's oldest tree, the bir oak tree on the east bank of the Kishawaki River. Michael, tell us a little bit about your organization and what we're going to do this week.
Well, I sure will. Let me begin by thanking every, by wishing everyone a Happy Earth Day, and I want to thank the city for the award and making the heritage tree dedication possible. I was invited to speak tonight about a particular oak tree that was discovered early on in my study and cataloguing for the Trees of DeKalb Project, with which most of you are familiar. On Friday, April 26, Arbor Day, the city will officially designate that same bir oak tree the Heritage Tree of DeKalb. We are certain, there are certain criteria used in choosing a heritage tree, which I will discuss shortly, but first, let's consider for a minute the word heritage. The Merriam-Webster Dictionary defines the word heritage as: 1. Property that descends to an heir. 2. Something transmitted by or acquired by a predecessor. From a predecessor, excuse me. Two examples are legacy and tradition, something passed on as a result of one's natural situation of birth. Now, let's talk a minute about the tree itself and how it fulfills the criteria for heritage tree designation. Age and size. There's only one way to definitively age a living tree, that is by sampling a core from that tree, which, by the way, is not always successful if rotting has occurred within the trunk. Having said that, I will bet my boots this oak tree was standing proud when the first European settlers arrived in these parts. Regarding size, having measured a number of large bir oak trees in DeKalb, including one bir oak, white oak hybrid, I have concluded that with a trunk circumference of 16 feet, this tree is in fact the largest of its species in DeKalb. Reality is another criterion. On this Earth Day 2019, bir oak trees are not a rarity. They can be found in every county in Illinois and a wide geographic area beyond. However, they are in decline for a number of reasons: harvesting, disease, oak wilt disease, loss of habitat, fragmentation of habitat, degradation of habitat, and the oak trees inability to propagate their species because more aggressive species, such as sugar maple trees, shade the forest floor where oak seeds and native woodland wildflowers would otherwise germinate. An example of this phenomenon can be seen in DeKalb at Nellin Woods or in that forsaken little gem of a woodlot adjacent to Elwood House that not long ago was a native wildflower and boreal showplace. Historic value. Before the City of DeKalb was incorporated in 1877, this area was called Huntley's Grove. Oak trees were a major constituent of that grove. I believe oak, our oak, was part of that grove. Ecological value. Oak trees support approximately 30 species of birds, a half dozen mammals, a myriad of insects, and lichen. They are the kingpin in the ecology of the oak hickory forest type. Oh, yes, and this one tree will supply enough oxygen during its growing season for about 10 people. Last, aesthetic value. I think we would all agree this oak tree is one beautiful specimen by any standard. I wish all of you could have seen it covered in ice this past January, shimmering in the morning sunlight. In conclusion, isn't it fortuitous that our oak stands where it does in full view of those people who walked the trail just across the river? I'm so glad our heritage tree is an oak. Oak trees epitomize strength. Let this tree be a living symbol of the strength of the people of DeKalb and a part of our legacy that will remain strong for generations to come.
Michael, I have a certificate of appreciation for the Trees of DeKalb Organization and you as its leader. See you on Friday. Friday at 10:30, in on the east bank of the Kishawaki River, right near the underpass by the Kishawaki River and by the Pearl, the bridge there, and right next to the Northern Rehab parking lot, we're going to have a small presentation designating this as the oldest tree in DeKalb. The Park District, Phil Young will be there. Myself, I'll make a few comments, so we would welcome you to come down. A little bit before 10:30, Park will get you down onto the Kishawaki-Kowanus Bike Path on the other side of the river. If you can't make it, all you have to do is drive over that bridge, look down, and you'll see that huge oak tree. And, Michael, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we look forward to that ceremony on Friday. Okay, I'd like Tristan Martin, please, to come forward, if you would, and tomorrow, April 23, is the, I believe, the 50th anniversary of the Northern Illinois Student Association. Is that correct?
Correct.
And whereas the history of the Northern Illinois University Student Association reveals a legacy of student activism that has become an integral component of higher education, therefore, I, Jerry Smith, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 23, 2019, as Northern Illinois University Student Association Day in the City of DeKalb, and ask the citizens of DeKalb and all NIU students to join me in extending congratulations and appreciation on the occasion of their 50th anniversary. The speaker of this year's Student Association Senate is Tristan Martin. Tristan?
Mayor of DeKalb, city council members, city officials, and members of the public, thank you for joining me here today. My name is Tristan Martin, and I have the honor and privilege of serving the Student Association Senate as the Speaker of the Senate for the 50th session. It is my honor to thank you. As the Speaker of the Senate, it humbles me deeply that the Northern Illinois University Student Association, which is Northern Illinois University Student Government, is within its 50th session, its 50th year of existence. Though it existed in many forms before 1968, in which it was founded, we now hear come today as it was declared in 1970, I believe it was 1997, 1998 or 1999, somewhere around that date, it was proclaimed as Student Association Day during that time. I am exceedingly appreciative to be able to work with city officials Raymond Munch, Jason Blumenthal, and Mayor Jerry Smith to make this happen. Student participation in organizations, events, and local governments in recent years has been a concern, not only within Northern Illinois University, but worldwide and nationwide especially. And with this proclamation, I am happy to say that, in my opinion, the Student Association's presence within Northern Illinois, Northern Illinois University and the community of the City of DeKalb at large is well and alive. I, in my opinion, am certain that future sessions of the Student Association will look forward to dedicating their time towards the betterment of the community as we have for 50 years previous. Thank you very much, everyone.
There's your proclamation. I'll sign. Tristan, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Okay, our next proclamation is Get on Board Day. Whereas April 25, 2019, marks National Get on Board Day, a day to showcase the benefits and build support for public transportation, as public transport offers economic opportunity and powers community growth by driving economic development and revitalizing neighborhoods. Therefore, I, Jerry Smith, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, proclaim April 25 as National Get on the Board Day in DeKalb, and join with public transportation agencies across this country by showcasing the benefits and building support for public transportation. Accepting our proclamation today is Transit Manager Marcus Cox. Marcus?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor is a member of council. I will keep this brief, but we just want to say thank you for recognizing National Get on Board Day, which is this upcoming Thursday, April 25. This is the first year in which they're going to be recognizing this National Get on Board Day, which is a way in which to showcase and to remind people about the importance that public transportation provides within our community. We, as a city, are appreciative of our partnerships with our members, that would be the Voluntary Action Center, as well as TransDev Services, the Husky Line, in providing us with the public transportation that we have here within the DeKalb urbanized area. As most of you know, we've recently performed a transit consolidation, which is going very well. We're very pleased with where we're at. All of the routes seem to be doing great. We're looking at expanding into other areas of town and elsewhere to provide as much opportunity as possible to the student, citizens, and visitors of DeKalb. As of today, April 22, and really up until March 31, we provide approximately 325,000 rides on our public transportation system so far this year, and we're looking to increase that number as much as we can as we go forward. So on behalf of everyone, thank you very much for this recognition.
Marcus, and I have this certificate for you. Okay, our next proclamation, International Firefighters' Day, May 4, 2019. Whereas International Firefighters' Day was established in 1999 to remember those firefighters worldwide lost in the line of duty protecting the safety of us all, therefore, I, Jerry Smith, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby encourage all citizens to recognize not only our local firefighters, but those worldwide on May 4 and year-round for their courage, their selfless service, and sacrifice. Accepting for the fire department is our Fire Chief Jeff McMaster, Lieutenant Chris Ziola, and Lieutenant Brian Andrus. You want to say a few words, Jeff? No, I say you two. Thank you very much. Let's thank these guys for all they do every day. Two more proclamations this evening, as our firefighters accept their congratulations. Our next proclamation is for Municipal Clerks' Week. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk is a time-honored and vital part of local government throughout the world, therefore, I, Jerry Smith, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, do hereby recognize the week of May 5 through 11, 2019, as Municipal Clerks' Week, and extend appreciation to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. I'd like to present this to our city clerk Lynn Fizikas. Lynn, if you'd like to come up, fine, or if you'd like to stay right there, I'll give this to you later. What would you like to do? You'd like to take a break? Come on up. Yeah, Lynn Fizikas, Municipal Clerks' Week. Our last proclamation for this evening is Museum Day. Whereas the museums in the City of DeKalb and DeKalb County provide unique educational and cultural opportunities to enhance our quality of life, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City of DeKalb endorses the efforts of the DeKalb County History Center and encourages all citizens to participate in the celebrations as we honor and learn about the proud history of our county. Accepting this award and making a few brief remarks about something relatively new in DeKalb, which is really, really exciting for DeKalb County, is the Executive Director of the DeKalb County History Center, and that is Michelle Donahue. Michelle?
Well, thank you so much for this opportunity tonight. As Mayor Smith mentioned, we are a relatively new organization. The DeKalb County History Center was founded March 2018, and this is our first Museum Day for all of DeKalb County. It is scheduled for May 11, which also coincides with the grand opening of the DeKalb County History Center. We're going to be featuring a traveling Smithsonian exhibit, so it's a big honor. There's only six places in the state of Illinois that are going to be hosting this exhibit. It's called Crossroads: Change in Rural America, which is certainly DeKalb County's story. And not only are we going to be hosting this, but a big part of our organization's philosophy is partnerships and collaboration. So we're going to be working with museums throughout DeKalb County to have partner displays at different locations. They will be open on many of these museums on May 11, but also specifically, we're going to be working with the, Alwood House is going to have a special display along with the Glidden House. We're going to be borrowing items from DHA, the DeKalb Area Agricultural Heritage Association, as well as the Egyptian Theater, and are also going to be doing partner programs with the DeKalb Public Library. So again, this is just a great opportunity to celebrate some of the great traditions and stories in our county, and I hope that you all can come and check out some of these treasures, because many of these museums have hours that are not the most accessible for everyone to come and check out, but they, many of these museums, I believe it'll be over 15, that are going to be participating on Museum Day on May 11, so thank you.
Exciting stuff. Michelle, if you would accept this, please. Okay, our final presentation this evening is our Human Services Funding Report for FY 2019. Tonight, we hear from Elder Care Services Executive Director Tara Russo. Tara?
Thank you for having me. Thank you, Mayor, council members, and administration. I'm Tara Russo, Executive Director for Elder Care Services of DeKalb County, and we receive funding, human services funding, every year from the City of DeKalb, so we're very happy to receive that, and every dollar goes right back into our clients. Overall, our agency, I would say we're at about 37% of our total clientele is City of DeKalb residents, so the money that we do get for all of our different programs goes, a lot of it can go right back into the city. Our funding for human services for this next year, and what we've been working on this year too, has been towards our self-neglect program and vulnerable adults, which is seniors and persons with disabilities 18 to 59. Our numbers have been going up steadily every year with adult, with abuse and adult protective services, and the same is happening with self-neglect, where people are making poor choices, not taking care of themselves, maybe they're untreated, mentally ill, they're shut in, sometimes they have, you know, no support, no family, they're just kind of stuck at home. Our program with self-neglect is where we go out and we help these folks. We just, we keep on trying. We don't just try once and then say, oh, well, they won't let us in. We'll keep trying up to six, seven, eight different times, and we go out to the We'll keep trying up to six, seven, eight different times, and we go out to their house many times unannounced, because they're not going to invite us out necessarily. While they have self-determination with this program, a lot of the times, if we just keep trying and keep offering assistance, and sometimes we bring a bag of goodies, we can get in. What makes this program so important to the City of DeKalb is we help with the municipality and with the fire department and the police department by helping these individuals, because these are also high 911 utilizers. So, many times, we'll get calls from the fire department or the police department about certain folks who have maybe called 30 times in a year, 60 times in a year. We've had people over like three years that have called over 3,000 times to 911. So, we're the ones that will go out and take care of these folks, case-manage them, offer them services, help pay utility bills, do cleanouts, deal with infestations, animal hoarding, regular hoarding, noncompliant of medication, noncompliant of taking care of their health, house hazards, utility shut-offs, yards in disrepair, house in disrepair, all those kinds of things that you probably don't want next door to you, we will go out and help take care of these folks and get them the services they need. The funding that we get really helps supplement our programs, and while we do get some assistance from the Department on Aging, that is for the cases that are imminent risk. So, what we try to focus the dollars from the City of DeKalb on are for those cases that are intermediate, because we don't want them to get to the point where it's a crisis all the time. And when we do help these folks, by treating the problem and not just the symptoms, we can prevent them from having to do that merry-go-round ride at the hospital at Northwestern Medicine. And we can help cut readmissions, which is very important, because that affects the hospital as well with Medicare funding. So, it's really a win-win. The dollars you give us go right back into the program. We're able to help the city, we're able to help the community, and we're able to help seniors and persons with disabilities be able to stay at home safe, secure, and supported, which is also our new mission statement. It's always been trying to help you stay at home where you want to be, which is true, but we want to help you stay at home where you want to be safely, securely, and supported. And so, I thank you for those dollars, they really do help. Just for numbers, just so you know, I would say when I came on in 2012, we were getting maybe nine intakes a month for elder abuse and for self-neglect. We are regularly now getting 33 intakes every single month. Our numbers are going to be well over 300 for this, for fiscal year 19. So, it just keeps growing, and I think a lot of it's the education that we're able to put out there about what we do, and again, the funding that we get helps us to do that. So, thank you.
Good. Before you leave the dais, I'd just like to see if anybody would like to make any comment or have any question for Tara? If not, we thank you for all you do in our community. Thank you for the report tonight.
Thank you.
Item G on our agenda, our consent agenda. Again, all items listed on the consent agenda are usually enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, in which event, that item could be removed from the consent agenda. Is there anyone who would like to remove any item from the consent agenda? If not, let me read each of the following items that we're asking for your approval. Number one, minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting of April 8, 2019. Two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of April 8, 2019. Number three, accounts payable and payroll through April 22, 2019, in the amount of $1,847,610.11 And, number four, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report for March 2019. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Stupija, seconded by Alderman Noriko. Any discussion? Roll call.
Stupija?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight I.
Motion passes. Consent agenda is approved as read and as printed. Now, we go into public hearings. We do have one public hearing scheduled for tonight. This public hearing, I will open it at 6:54 PM. This public hearing is in regards to the annexation agreement for property located at 1827 Pleasant Street at the request of Commonwealth Edison. The petitioner, Commonwealth Edison, has requested some additional time before presenting its proposal to expand its substation at 1827 Pleasant Street. Since public notice of this hearing has been posted, the city manager asks the mayor and this council to open this hearing, which we have done, and then take whatever necessary parliamentary steps to continue the public hearing until a later date, which has been requested. Any public participation at this public hearing on this request? If not, I'd ask our city manager to perhaps make any comment you'd like.
No.
If not, okay. Then I will close this public hearing at 6:56.
Mayor?
Yes.
It would be our request in lieu of closing the public hearing that the council continue the public hearing to our May 27th city council meeting.
Okay. Do you need, do we need a motion on that effect?
We would request that motion.
Okay, I'd request a motion to the effect that we move this public hearing and move it until the meeting on June, what was that, or May?
May 27.
May 27.
So moved.
Been moved by Alderman Jacobson?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Favor. Any discussion? Yes, Dean?
My apologies, that would be Memorial Day holiday, so we would request the 28th.
28th, okay. That's that Tuesday, the day after Memorial Day, okay. Do you have that, Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, good. Why don't we have a roll call to that?
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Stupija?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight I.
Okay, resolutions. Any, no other considerations, there are none. Now, we go into resolutions. Item J on your agenda, Resolution 2019-067, supporting the issuance of a permit from the Illinois Department of Transportation authorizing McDonald's to reconstruct the commercial entrance at 805 West Lincoln Highway. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. I'd like to ask our city manager, Bill Nicholas, if he'd like to address this item.
Thank you, Mayor. There are two items on this agenda concerning some redevelopment work that's going to occur at that McDonald's site at 805 West Lincoln this year. By the way, in the background, it made a reference to the location of that entrance on State Highway Route 23, unless the world has turned, I think it's still 38. So, I wanted to make that clear for the record. As in other things we've done here, as recently as a couple meetings ago, when the council entertained a similar kind of permit for the pizza work that's going to be done this summer, the IDOT requires a signed resolution of this type, in which the council becomes the guarantor of the work, make sure that it's done properly. Our city engineer actually is the one who's out there. You don't have to do this yourselves. So, we recommend your approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson? Finukin?
Yes.
Stupija?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion passes. Thank you. Number two, Resolution 2019-068, authorizing an agreement with DeKalb Corn Classic and the Kishawaki Sunrise Rotary Club for the 2019 DeKalb Corn Classic 5K, 10K, and Taste of DeKalb events on September 29, 2019. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finukin, seconded by Alderman Favor. Bill, would you like to speak to the side note, please?
Just very briefly, that the Corn Classic has been a longstanding event in our community. Last year, the volunteers who organize this every year partnered with the Kishawaki Sunrise Rotary Club, and they conducted a little different than a much more exciting Corn Classic, I understand. It was tied to the inaugural Taste of DeKalb. There are a number of events that occurred in and around Palmer Court, and there was a 10K race that coursed through the community. It was a beautiful time of year, and it was a great day, sunny day. This year, because of the success of last year, and because of some interest by people who don't want to run a 10K race but are happy to run a 5K race, there's a little adjunct to the race course, and it will not create the need for additional street closures, with one exception, that is the closure of Roosevelt Street from Third to Gerler, and that will facilitate the shorter race route. A couple of things that are in this resolution, I just want to point out to you. Last year, I understand that at the end of the races, the race, there was a distribution of free beer to participants who were over the age of 21, and we pleased it. There were no adverse occurrences, and that's part of this resolution. In addition, last year, there apparently were some concerns raised about the potential for rerouting if there was a road issue or the weather was not cooperative, and in order to address that concern, this agreement that you have before you tonight authorizes the city manager to prove any last-minute deviations that might occur from the previous council meeting to the actual occurrence of the race. We recommend your approval.
Thought it went very well last year, hope this year will even be better. Alderman Finukin?
I'd just like to bring the Cohen's attention, there's two errors on the map. One is, of all things, Husky is misspelled on Husky Stadium, so if you'd correct that. And then you misidentified the Kishawaki Quanis Pathway as the DeKalb Nature Trail. The DeKalb Nature Trail is one up North First Street, but along the south of the river, that's the Kishawaki Quanis Pathway. So, in future versions of the map, if you've had those corrected, please.
Oh, absolutely. Our volunteers.
Yep, thank you.
Mayor, may I say one thing?
Yes.
Despite those minor flaws, Cohen Barnes has proven, in my short tenure, to be a great friend of the city of DeKalb and our community and the downtown in particular, and I attended one of the organizing meetings for this particular project, and I walked out feeling 10 feet tall. So, kudos to the people, including Cohen, who put this on.
Absolutely. Cohen, would you like to say something? You should have filled out a speaker request form, but we'll get...
I'm sorry, there's a quick 60-second, two videos that we'd love to show you, the race itself, if you would indulge me.
Is that okay, council?
Sure.
Okay, sure.
If DJ Jeff Pertel could make this happen. He said he needs a second. Ah, there he is. Talk about another great asset to the city. He wasn't sure he'd be able to get sound, and it looks like he may not. And the last one, if you'd indulge me, the 60 seconds, it's testimonials, which I think is the most important thing about all these type of events. Over half of the participants were from outside our community, and I just wanted to have you hear directly from the participants what they thought of the City of DeKalb, NIU, and the race in general.
Yeah, great. I talked to a few of them last year, too, there.
Yeah, it was pretty amazing.
I've never been more excited for a Corn Classic.
This is my first time running in about 10 years.
It was a good challenge.
I really loved the new course. I liked all the twists and turns in it.
Loved going through the stadium. Favorite part was running through the stadium.
Running through the NIU stadium.
It's just amazing.
Throughout the entire course, there were people cheering you on.
I love the cheering, that just motivated me to do my best time ever today.
So, I went to school at NIU, and it's fun to come back and share it with my girls.
It was wonderful. It highlighted the best parts of DeKalb.
What did you think of this course?
Awesome. I loved it. It was awesome.
What's your favorite part?
Getting done. Honestly, getting done.
Want to run it again?
Yeah.
Oh, totally would do it again.
Of course, I can't wait.
I definitely will run it next year.
I'm coming back.
We'll be back.
What were the numbers last year, Cohen, and what do you expect this year?
The year before was about 160, this year was 367, and we're anticipating 700 to 900 this year with the addition of the 5K, so...
Wonderful.
Yeah, we've already had a ton of sign-ups already. So, I just wanted to say thank you to city council for allowing us to continue with this race, and thanks to the police department, the fire department, and the street department, which is an awesome crew to work with. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Cohen, I appreciate your comments and your remarks. Any further discussion or comments? We do have a resolution, a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Stupija?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you, motion passes. Number three, Resolution 2019-069, approving a low alcohol-by-volume restaurant license for Best of the Middle East Inc., doing business as Jamram Middle Eastern, located at 209 East Lincoln Highway. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finukin, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Before we have any potential discussion, Bill, do you have any comments on this?
Just to say that the application has been reviewed, and we found no issues with it, and we recommend your approval.
Good. See, we have some folks here tonight, if they'd like to make any comments. If not, we will move forward. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Stupija?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight I.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Alderman Finuk, excuse me, Fagan will be recusing himself from this next item.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Alderman Jacobson is also...
Alderman Jacobson. So, Alderman Jacobson and Alderman Fagan are recusing themselves from this next resolution request, and that is 2019-070, approving a bar liquor license for Tavern on Lincoln LLC, located at 106 East Lincoln Highway. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finukin, seconded by Alderman Stupija. Bill, any comment on this?
Just in this case, the license would allow the establishment to serve alcohol of any type. Bar establishments can only be entered by persons who are 21 years of age or older, or who are with their parents or legal guardians. Food's not required to be purchased with alcohol in these establishments, however, in this particular case, the establishment has created a full operating kitchen with premium food offerings, and so food will be available.
Look forward to the opening of this establishment. Any comments or questions? If not, roll call, please.
Finuk, Finukin?
Yes.
Stupija?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Six I.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Alderman Jacobson and Alderman Fagan have rejoined us for action on Resolution Number Five, Resolution 2019-071, authorizing the staffing of one additional seasonal public works maintenance position. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Stupija, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Anything to add to this background material?
Just to speak to some questions that were raised at the last meeting, this is a, I think, an economical and a prudent alternative to a situation that we've had for a while, which is a regular part-time maintenance position that's remained open because of a variety of things. The person who filled that position is not coming back, I'm told. This position has focused specifically on downtown maintenance, and that's something... This position has focused specifically on downtown maintenance, and that's something that we are still committed to on a regular basis. What we're proposing is filling this position at a seasonal rate, which will realize some of the significant cost savings which are identified in the background. The funding's already been included in the FY 2019 annual budget, so we think this is a good fit. This is not a benefited position.
Okay, so it's a budgeted position. Any further comment or questions? Roll call.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight-I.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Number six, Resolution 2019-072, terminating a preliminary development incentive agreement for the renovation of a former... of the former St. Mary's Hospital at 145 Fisk Avenue. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. We do have one person who would like to speak to this item, and that is, once again, Mark Sharba. Mark?
I'm not a fan of TIF, and I think I've made that clear to most of the council members. On that subject, I do want to remind the council what it did recently when it decided to surplus the TIF funds most recently, that you gave back half of the TIF funds to our taxing partners. The school board did an awesome thing. They took their portion of the rebated monies, the surplus monies that they received, and they're putting those funds toward the debt for the school. A very wise thing. And I know probably paying off debt is not glamorous as building buildings downtown, but it was a very wise thing to do. This is also a very wise thing, and I commend our city manager for bringing this forward and placing extra scrutiny on this TIF expense. I wish going forward that we would just stop the handouts of TIF. And I remind everybody watching at home that are maybe watching this video, every time a TIF expense is approved, it takes money away from police, fire, your streets, and more importantly, your neighborhood. So if we can stop this nonsense regarding TIF going forward and just not approve expenses going forward, you'll help out the people of this community along with our taxing partners. And the question I have for our city manager is that there seems to be some diverse conversation regarding what to do with the monies that we're going to save here, the $2.5 million. I believe the comments I read from Mr. Nicholas in The Chronicle stated that probably going to spend it on something else. Some council members have suggested to me, along with some incoming council members, that the money probably would be best surplused in the long run. So I'm hoping that we do surplus these funds and return them to the taxing districts, including the City of DeKalb. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, there are no other folks who would like to speak to that item, I don't think. So I'm going to ask our city manager to make any comments he'd like before our vote.
My comments will be brief. This matter has had some good coverage in the local media. The background report for your agenda tonight has been online for some time. But I think I need to say some things for the record. As the council knows, back in December, on the 18th of December, to be exact, of 2018, a preliminary development agreement with 145 Fisk LLC was approved that identified a potential forgivable loan of $2.5 million to assist the redevelopment of the former St. Mary's Hospital on Fisk Avenue into a 40-room boutique hotel with associated commercial During the 2018 council discussion, there were concerns voiced by others about the last-minute identification of this particular project and several other projects. But in order to address that concern, there was an... the agreement was very specific that there should be 120-day due diligence period in which the developers of... the proposed developers were to meet certain thresholds with respect to financial information and also certain planning and zoning information, building plans, conceptual site plans, and the like. So at this point, where do we stand? The principals of the 145 Fisk LLC, Chip Olson and Nick Kronauer, have provided, as I say in the background, no substantial information to justify an extension of the preliminary incentive agreement, in my opinion, much less the commitment to a final incentive agreement. The deficiencies are listed in my background report on pages seven and eight. I'm happy to answer any questions or enumerate them if the council wishes. Contact was made with the principals a number of times to encourage them to present information. On April 1st, I notified the principals that, in my opinion, the corporation did not have the capacity or the viability to complete the project. There was some back and forth in email. Since that time, no additional information has been received to affirm that there is a reasonable or informed basis upon which this project can be considered possible or ultimately successful. I believe it's even more clear on the basis of all the documents that we have, which are spare, that a public investment of $2.5 million in TIF funds in this project is unjustified and an unreasonable risk of public funds. City council approval of this resolution is recommended.
We have a motion on the floor. A second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Excuse me. I have a question, if I may.
Yes. Alderman Fanouken.
You know, during our December discussions about the TIF projects, we were talking about the fact that if we didn't at least tentatively approve these projects, those dollars are going to be surplused. So is that the case now, that if we do away with this tentative agreement, that those dollars now become surplus?
That's a question I'm going to... We happen to have our first quarterly JRB meeting on Friday, and welcome people who are interested in that particular question to attend and join in the conversation if they wish. I wanted to see what the JRB wanted to recommend and bring that back to the council. There is a possibility... So the council's guidance on this some months ago was that that would be a requirement because TIF 2 would be ended. The fact is that TIF 2 has not ended yet. It will be sometime this year. Money that has accrued in 2018 for TIF 2 has not been dispersed to the city at this point. That's one of the four ingredients that has to happen for the TIF 2 to officially be ended. So I intend to bring a status report to the JRB, and then I will replicate that and expand upon that for the council's edification and review and possibly action at the subsequent council meeting.
Thank you.
It's important to note, this consideration is completely independent of that. This consideration is on the merits of this project as proposed in the documentation submitted.
I understand that, but going along with our discussions past December, I wanted to make that point clear, that we had to go with... that we're going to review it with JRB. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight-I.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Number seven, authorizing... excuse me. Resolution 2019-073, authorizing an agreement for legal services for the City of DeKalb and approving the appointment of a city attorney. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City manager Nicholas, would you like to make any comment on this? We do have quite a few...
I do, actually. Just some limited comments. As you can see in the background, the council had authorized me to issue an RFP back in February, on February 11th, to be exact, that RFP was prepared a number of days and vetted by the council, issued on February 20th. The deadline for responses was March 15th. We received 11 responses to our RFP. In a special executive session on Wednesday, April 3rd, the mayor and council interviewed four finalists. And then the council, after some further review and discussion, directed me to approach Rosenthal, Murphy, Coe Blenson, Donahue, and in particular, two gentlemen who are here tonight who were also involved in the interview process, John Donahue and Matthew Rose, who I will introduce in just a moment. I guess I already have.
Okay.
This firm is a full-service municipal firm. It's got a principal office in the Chicagoland area. It was founded in 1987. Currently has five attorneys, along with paralegal and support staff. About 90% of their clients are municipalities and other public entities. The principals will be John Donahue and Matthew Rose. Would you stand up, gentlemen? You're sitting patiently in the back. Just a few words about Mr. Donahue. He has 30 years of experience in municipal law, a very special expertise in tax increment financing, economic development, zoning, and land use, pension liability, and general corporate governance. He received his undergraduate degree in engineering from the Illinois Institute of Technology, and his Juris Doctor with honors from the DePaul College of Law, where he is also a member of the... at the time, a member of the DePaul Law Review. Mr. Rose has 10 years of experience in municipal law. He will serve as the primary litigation counsel and FOIA compliance counsel. He received his undergraduate degree from the University of Michigan Bloom, I think that's what it is, and his Juris Doctor with honors from the Chicago Kent College of Law. The firm's proposed pricing is in the background. The firm will work with our city attorney, Dean Frieders, in the next weeks to accomplish a smooth transition in all areas. I want to thank Mr. Frieders for opening the door to that, and as always, he has been very dedicated and will be very thorough. The effective start date for the firm is June 1st. We recommend your approval.
Any discussion or further questions? Alderman Noriko.
I recognize that moving, you know, with this firm, we're moving to somewhat different model in terms of the pricing, you know. I think that the budget impact is still unclear because it's unknown how many those additional hours will be required for... under the additional services section B in the agreement. I would just expect that the city manager and the mayor will work closely with the firm so that those expenses are kept in line. We've, you know... I was going to say pretty heavily. I think we've heavily utilized, you know, the city attorney. And, you know, again, you know, moving to a different way of operating, it's going to take some back and forth, you know, to make that work and make it work, you know, reasonably on both sides. So, you know, obviously, I will vote yes. It's just, you know, this note of caution, again, new environment.
Alderman Noriko, you were certainly part and parcel of the interview process. As we had, what was it, 10 or 11 firms that we interviewed? And we came to consensus that this particular firm was the one that we would recommend. Now, if you recall, and I think this is a very important point to make, any of the candidates, any of the potential law firms, during the discussions with us, we made it perfectly clear about the fiscal sensitivity that this council and future councils will have regarding legal expenses for legal services. So I would hope that Mr. Donahue and Mr. Rose will concur that they heard us loud and clear about what we expect, and we would ask that they respect the frugality that has become the norm rather than the exception in the City of DeKalb. Any further comments? Thank you, Kate. Roll call.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight-I.
Motion passes. Welcome, gentlemen. We'll be seeing more of you, I'm sure.
Of course.
Thank you. Item number eight now. Resolution 2019-074, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the DeKalb Township Road District for bus shelters. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Stupija. And city manager Nicholas, would you like to make any comment on this?
Briefly, we're fortunate to have a partnering relationship with the Park... Park is a... Listen to me. Township, and in particular, our Township Road Commissioner. It touches many areas of our roads on the periphery of our community. And in this instance, this is a little unique. There's one of our targeted areas for a bus stop and a little canopy happens to be on township property. And so what this does is allow us to get in there and build the shelter, and we'll be responsible for that. This is also a DSATS project. We got grant money for this, and we want to proceed and finish this. You may have noticed some of these canopies around the town. They're bright and shiny, and they seem to be pretty darn durable, and so we hope they will last for many years. We recommend your support. Oh, I should also mention that in the wordsmithing of this, we were trying to do this just in a few days leading up to the publishing of this agenda because the canopy is here, the pad has been poured. We didn't have an IGA in place, so we're all working together to get this done. And there was a little bit of back and forth with the attorney for the township, and we just wanted you to know that although the buses stopped there, the sidewalk doesn't get there yet. And so there is a plan to extend the sidewalk, and hopefully that will be done by others. If not, we will eventually extend it sufficiently to get around a corner and a bend in the road to get to the bus stop.
Thank you for that further explanation. Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight-I.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item K on the agenda, ordinances for second reading. There are none tonight. However, we have several ordinances projected for first reading. The first one is number one, ordinance 2019-034, amending Chapter 51 Traffic Schedule B through streets, stop intersections, and yield intersections as it pertains to the installation of a stop sign for northbound Huntington Road at its intersection with Ridge Drive. Roll call. Or, excuse me, motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager Nicholas, any additional information?
I'll just say, thank you to Zach Gill, our city engineer, contractual engineer. We have a contractual relationship with Fair Graham, and he's doing an excellent job. And the next three actually all have to do with his initiative to seek out some issues where safety is a problem and responding to some neighborhood residents in two of the three cases here. This particular one remedies what often happens when you're trying to establish traffic patterns. At a T-intersection, there's going to be a yield sign maybe rather than a stop sign. But we've noticed since this is a pedestrian crossing and more specifically, a crossing for schoolchildren, the yield isn't being observed. And, I mean, stop signs aren't being observed anymore, but we certainly would rather have a stop sign here than a yield sign, so we intend to enforce it if you approve it. Thank you.
Any discussion of this item? Roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson. Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
First reading of ordinance passes. Is there an indication that we would want to waive second reading on this?
Yes.
I entertain a motion to that effect?
Motion to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
That was Alderman Verbic who made that motion to waive second, and Alderman Jacobson to, on the second. Any further discussion on the waiver of second reading? Roll call, please.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That ordinance passes. Thank you. Number two, ordinance 2019-035, amending Chapter 51 traffic, Schedule C, parking prohibited, Section 1, no parking at any time as it pertains to a no parking restriction for a portion of Grand Avenue and Reserve Lane in the enclave neighborhood. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. City Manager Nicholas, I know you indicated that Zach Gill has worked on these three.
Yes, and as with the previous ordinance, we hope we can get to second reading on this one and the next one, but in this case, as you say, the enclave neighborhood, the public streets there are twenty-six feet narrower than our standard thirty-six back-to-back, back-of-curb, back-to-curb street. That means over time that we have, there's less street to repair, but there are a lot of curves in this particular neighborhood. Parking has been restricted, but in certain areas, residents have a very heightened concern about safety for people playing in and around the curb line area, so they've asked for no parking on the west side of Grand Avenue from Legacy to its western terminus, and no parking on the east side of Reserve Lane from a point eight-hundred-and-twenty feet north of Legacy Drive to its eastern terminus. We recommend your approval and a move to Alderman.
I'm reading the background for this and the other two ordinances. What I was impressed with is that all three seem to have a good buy-in from our, from the residents in that particular neighborhood, and I think that's important. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Ordinance passes on first reading. Is there any indication that we'd like to waive second reading and approve this ordinance?
I'll move that we waive second reading and approve second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Verbic, that we waive second reading and pass this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Okay, we have one more ordinance similar to this, and that's ordinance 2019-036, amending Chapter 51, traffic Schedule Q, speed restrictions as it pertains to the reduction of the speed limit for Gerler Road from the east city limits to the west city limits. I'd entertain a motion, please.
Let me make that motion, please.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Fagan, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager Nicholas, anything to add?
No, Your Honor.
Any further, Alderman Fagan?
I've got some questions on this. I know that road is part DeKalb, DeKalb Township, and I think some Afton Township in there too, if I'm not mistaken. Actually, I've been driving this thing four or five times a day, and I've, honestly, you don't know what the speed limit is, where, and to make this. I mean, granted, it's forty-five, which means somebody's going to take fifty out of it, but, well, it's real, but I guess the question that I've got that was, to me, was, with the school being there at forty-five miles an hour, and we do have a school zone, you know, what, how do we normally look at that with, when we've got a school zone and a forty-five limit? And that's in town, I guess, wouldn't it?
Yeah. First of all, we want to, as you say, we want to even out the-
Right.
...the proper speed limit is, but Zach Gill's going to come up here and maybe he can address that question.
And also Chief Lowry might have a comment also on that. Go ahead, Zach.
Yeah, this specific, this specific- Section is actually to the west of that. It's currently, in the ordinance, it says fifty, so we're just bringing that forty-five consistent through the entire stretch. I guess if there's a desire to target closer to the school district, that again would need to be an amendment. This was more a housekeeping thing.
Right, and this is why, I mean, it's a vehicle for me to bring it up, and it was brought up to me, and I guess the question was, you know, is it normal to have a forty-five mile an hour speed limit by a school?
You know, with that not, I mean, the school isn't, doesn't lie on that actual street either. I mean, it's-
The kids are right there, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we're talking about St. Mary's.
Right, so, yeah, if we want to explore that, Chief, do you-
I mean, the in and out, the coming in and out of the school, obviously-
Right.
...the driveways and that, but the kids are out there with soccer and everything, but still, I don't know.
Chief, do you have any thoughts?
I was going to just reinforce what Zach had said. I mean, the regulations in regard to speed are often gauged based on, based on access, bus drop-off, bus pickup, parental access to schools, in that the entire access to St. Mary's is not on that road, it's on a side street. I do agree with you, Alderman, that there are children that are present out there. It's something that we could look at down the road-
Right.
...sooner rather than later, but we've, not since I've been here, had any serious incidents where there's been an accident involving a child.
Right, and the reason why I bring it up is it was brought up to me, so I just wanted to go out public on it and see what everybody has to say about it, but I am glad we're going to go over along with one speed limit.
Mm-hmm, consistent.
Right.
Alderman Favor?
Another example where that exists is Brooks Elementary Alphabetany. It's fifty-five until you pass the school, and then it changes to forty-five.
Your point being what?
That it is, I guess, I have a case where it is normal. It's in a, it's a residential setting for the school, but the road is considered more of a rural setting, and there is another precedent, I guess, out there where the speed limit is higher than what would be expected in a residential school zone.
Okay. Well, we're not voting on that particular geographical area in this, but if that is something that concerns that particular area, and part of that would be in the, what, first ward, or would that, is that first ward, David, up there? Yeah, then I think it could be brought forward, but at this point, we're voting, we have a motion on the floor and a second that we approve first reading of this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
As is the case with the two previous ordinance considerations, I would ask for a motion to waive second reading if one of our councilmen would like that to be the case.
So, second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, Alderman Jacobson, seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That ordinance passes then. Number four, ordinance 2019-037, authorizing an amendment to ordinance 2000-028 to allow for the remodeling of the existing McDonald's restaurant located at 805 West Lincoln Highway and providing for updates to the parking lot and the drive-thru. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. I think people who use this well-known restaurant will be pleased with the proposed redevelopment or rehabbing of this particular site. The Plan Commission on April third dug in on this, and they presented a couple of conditions of their own, which were agreeable to the firm. Dan Olson's done a good job in setting this up for you tonight and for the Plan Commission. The work, there's a lot of detail, but there's mostly outside work. They're going to update their outside facade. They're going to work on better ADA compliance with sidewalks, walkways, ramps. They're going to add some additional parking stalls on the west property line, and they're going to have two drive-through lanes at the menu board. Right now, you may notice that it jams up and backs up to the sidewalk on Lincoln Highway, Route 38. Got it now. There's also a fire hydrant in the middle of the sidewalk along West Lincoln Highway, and that will be relocated. Never a good idea. Also, some minor work inside the restaurant is proposed. Plan Commission voted five to zero on April third in favor of the project with the conditions that are identified in your background. We recommend your support for the Plan Commission action. Thank you.
Okay. We moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Motion passes. I'd entertain a motion to waive second reading and approve this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any further discussion on the request to waive second reading and approve? Roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion passes, and that ordinance passes. Now we move to reports and communications. Councilmember reports. Each of the councilmembers will have the opportunity to say anything they'd like or communicate. Alderman Jacobson.
Just another thank you to the voters of the first ward for putting your trust in me for the last eight years. I've been honored to be able to sit in this seat as your representative and look forward to the future of DeKalb, sitting on that side of the dais.
Thank you, David.
Look, and thank you very much for working with me for the last eight years, and all of you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fanouken.
I just want to thank my three outgoing colleagues. Dave and I at times have been diametrically opposed, but I think we both respected each other's opinions, and there was no personal animosity there at all. Joyce, in the short time you've been here, I've appreciated your input, and certainly a different perspective, and Kate, Kate and I have worked well together over the last four years. I think I was one of the first individuals she reached out when she was thinking about running the first time, and again, Kate, it's been interesting with your perspectives on things that we've had to deal with on councilman the last four years, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Fanouken. Alderman Stupija?
Yes, to the outgoing Aldermen, both, I would like that all this expertise that you have been able to give this council over the last several years, I hope somehow we can channel that and keep it within DeKalb in however you so choose to do it, whether it be a commission, whether it be coming up to meetings and speaking what you think about an issue, I'm certain it would be appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Stupija. Alderman Fagan?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Alderman Jacobson, my neighbor Joyce here for the last couple of months, and Kate for your four years. You know, just being here for two years, I have to respect putting in four, much less eight years. I want to thank you both, all three of you. You've helped me out quite a bit. Oh, and also, I want to remind Alderman Jacobson, when you're on the other side now, you're limited to three minutes.
And I've got that stopwatch right here.
Oh, it's just-
Okay, anything else, Pat?
That's it.
Thank you. Alderman Noriko?
And I do actually have one final thought.
Surprise.
I know, I know. I read something on Sunday that struck me, and I'm hoping that somewhere in the audience, you know, be it here or the listening audience, as they say, there's an entrepreneur, an entrepreneur who would like to give another go at a bookstore in DeKalb. It's really a shame that a university town does not have a bookstore, and there was a column in the Tribune that talked about the importance of independent bookstores, and triggered by an individual who sent a tweet out, and one of the things, he listed thoughts on how independent bookstores strengthen communities. They create jobs and pay taxes. They offer author visits, open-mic nights, a place to hang out, store cats to pet and photograph, et cetera. And this tweeter concluded, this bookstore owner, "If you've ever wondered why it seems like there are no more bookstores anymore, or why retail businesses keep closing in your downtown, this is it. A cheap book still has a high cost." So that young or old entrepreneur, someone who's looking for a new venture, please think about it for DeKalb.
Thank you, Alderman Noriko. Alderman Verbic?
Outgoing Aldermen, thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure serving with you, and again, thanks for everything you've done for the city of DeKalb.
I would echo that as well. Thank you all three very much for your service. I've enjoyed working with you and our discussions, and I wish the best for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Favor. I would reiterate what I said earlier in the meeting about the three retiring Aldermen. Look forward to working with Carolyn and Scott and Tracy as they come aboard. What we neglected to say is that Alderman Favor ran for reelection and was reelected again, so Tony, you'll be with us for another four years, and we appreciate that. Moving on, anything for, from our city clerk, Lynn Fazekas?
No, no report today.
Thank you. And finally, Alderman, or excuse me, City Manager Bill Nicholas.
Got promoted.
Yeah. In behalf of our professional staff and all the people who work for the city of DeKalb, I want to say thank you to the outgoing Alder persons who, to a person have been very kind and supportive to me, have been inquisitive, have demanded openness and succinctness, and I fail in that area in some occasions, but I try, and we will miss you, just as we will look forward to three new persons up on the dais. So congratulations, and we're the better for your time serving us. One quick note, and Gene Lowry has been a big part of this. I have personally been in the, in these meetings, but he's had a number of conversations with Kurt Thurmeier, who was here not too long ago with a petition from persons living on Thornbrook and Miller, and the petition called basically to remove all restrictions on parking in those areas, and the interesting thing happens when people of goodwill get together. They reveal concerns as well as strong interests. In this case, there was a little more consensus than maybe people thought at that meeting when Kurt was here. As an example, Thornbrook cul-de-sac is very narrow. You can scarcely make a turn if you have a pickup truck like I do. You really have, it's a two, it's a two-back, or at least a one-back up, so the residents in that small ball don't want any parking on it. In addition, that area has been paved over a number of times, so the curb is basically non-existent. You can see traces of it, and on one side, there wasn't ever a curb on Thornbrook, almost like a township road, a gutter, or not a gutter, curb and gutter, but a ditch line. So- So parking on there creates some problems with ruts on the front yards. Also, people like to have their streets plowed and street cleaned, so there's some interest, okay, no parking on the bulb, and no parking between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM, and then there are some even that we're thinking, well, I'm a little nervous now, if we take all the restrictions off, what will happen with student parking, because it's pretty close to cutting over to the Music Building and the Fine Arts Building. So, there's going to be one more discussion, a couple people who wanted to be in this last discussion weren't there. We hope to bring an ordinance to the council at the next regular meeting. I want to thank Alderman Norrico for being a catalyst for the discussions that we've had, and for being a steady advocate for the residents in that area. Thank you.
Well, you know, and that was just part of the Safe Streets Initiative, it was part and parcel of that. Chief Lowery, I appreciate all your work on that. Commander Ruth Woodruff has been very, very instrumental in continuing, continuing to work with residents, because that's what we're here to serve. We're here to serve the residents, and if we have a particular pocket, a particular neighborhood, a particular street that wants a stop sign or whatever, that is our duty, that is our responsibility, to respond to those folks in a way that, you know, makes sense for them and makes sense for this community. So, thank you, city manager Nicholas, for that report. There is no executive session scheduled for this evening. I would entertain a motion to adjourn this regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Jacobson, seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we are adjourned. Thank you.[1793.01]